Good evening. We'll call to order the October meeting of the Troy Planning Board. Would you stand, please, for pleasure of the members? Thank you. All the way. Member Dickinson?
Here.
Member Shufel?
Here.
Member Scully?
Here.
Member York?
Here.
Member Kio present. Quorum is present, so we will begin. The first order of business is approval of the minutes of the previous meeting. Is there a motion to approve or amend the minutes?
I'll move to approve the minutes of the previous meeting.
Member Scully?
My second.
Second. Member Dickinson, thank you. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All say nay. Point of order, do we need to have individual roll call on these motions?
For which?
For, for instance, approval of the minutes.
Yep, yeah. All that was, that's all recorded when you guys vote.
So unanimous?
Yep.
Thank you. At the request of the
switch to the bottom. You can pull it off.
Identify yourself for the record, please?
Yes, my name is Andrew Donovan. Represent Andrew Donovan, U C. I am engineer for the project representing the Yes, congratulations. What we had is a building, it's in the residential, residential zone. Prior to the rezoning of 2023, this building had been used for a number of years commercially. Primarily as a good spot, a big spot. The owner vacated the property, now it's about six years. And so, we had, they had to start a wall removal. So it was interresidential zone, it might be from the zoning board of appeals in April requesting new variants for the property so that we could bring it back to a commercial use. That, that request was granted. Continuum upon us getting approval from, by the time the plan of the city Troy Plan Commission, now the Plan Board. So here we are before you, with a proposal before the board, I think it was July. And so now we're back again to approve more of this project.
Did you?
I did.
Staff recommendations?
A couple of the staff recommendations on one, the site lighting. It was, it was recommended, in one of the staff reports, the recommendations was that new fixtures be installed. The most recent documents, or recent drawings, of the site lighting plan. The building has spotlight type, stock that mounted fixtures.
We've not seen
How good they are. We're proposing that we will bring those back up to the working order. In the, the city code 28586, refers to site lighting.
We are allowed to use the, that the spotlight type lighting fixtures, mounted fixtures.
We don't exceed 500 roomins, the equipment, 105. So we're proposing that we keep these two fixtures. We still nothing stronger than 105. And that we will turn them down so that we're not, one, shooting across the street into the, against our wood, but into the living center, or even onto the traffic coming from the street. The step in was three trees, again, in the most recent packet. There is, there's a landscape plan, and the landscape plan does identify two trees. And it identifies the species. And that those, that species tree was taking
Troy's And then
The most recent staff report discusses raising the curbing 15th Street. Couple of occasions, I've had conversations with the city engineer.
With regard to this. I
My opinion that we were in agreement
The curbing, or replacing the curbing along 15th Street in front of the property. And the justification for that is that
This curbing wasn't
It's
Wasn't, it's not a result of traffic coming over this, this curbing in its present condition because of a number of aging projects along this 15th Street. That the drains, the asphalt up to, you know, maybe an inch or so of curbing. I'm more than happy to add
Go, have another discussion with the city engineer. Forward at the
The board will allow that to go forward, and I will work that out with the city engineer. If I didn't understand into that, it caught me a little by surprise when I saw, saw this.
Or
And if, and if the resolution, the engineer said he wants the curbs raised, then he would do that?
That would be, that, that would be then put to the owner.
To commit to do that.
Yes.
But yes, I will, I, I, I will commit to do it. I don't have, the owner is not here with me right now, but we understand that it's should that not happen, it would be a deal breaker for the approval process.
And if you Whether or not we would require to raise the curbing.
100% ready.
Yes.
Have issue with it?
The
The, it's a trash enclosure, the garbage enclosure. At one point during the design process, they had, actually had the dumpster enclosure on what would be the southeast corner of, corner of the, the pavement area. It was looked at, discussed, and thought, maybe it would be better somewhere else.
And I'd
How we get access to that. This presentation where it's shown on the plan. It works in, it works in theory, and it's our role to make sure it works in practice. So what I would do is I would work with the planning department. If we were to move forward, how we, we're going to work with the planning department to, one, even if we move into the southeast corner of the
Area to what is going to be the food service space.
Even if we move to there, we're still going to have to have that garbage plant. We're going to have to have a plan for pickup and disposal. So that will be again, another thing that is mentioned, that we were most definitely agreed to having that contractual agreement with a disposal company, and the hours that they propose to pick up so that either they're in and out before third party, or the owner, that the owner is agreeing with the disposal company that you'll be able to deal with the park in the city. When that work with planning to give all those final things up. I personally believe that, given the size of the closure and the, the topography of that south end of the, of the building, it's a lot. It would, it would almost be easy, easy then. I like the present location, if planning, from an appearance standpoint, doesn't want it in the paved area, that would really be important, happy to work with that screen located. But where it is right now, it would be the same no matter what. We would still have to have that agreement in place, so that the disposal company had access to it. When there's no vehicles in.
Using the north side is that the city engineer wants some permeable space there for runoff water, so how do you address that, if you put the containers there?
That, it was, I
It's, it's a, it's a
That hadn't been discussed with the city engineer, myself, before, prior to this. So that would definitely be a discussion where, if we can make the the permeable aisle, or, you know, area, at the north end of the, the east area, if we can make that wide enough to meet the, okay with the city engineer, and still leave the dumpster enclosure there, and we have it okay, we have it okay with the dumpster enclosure there. We'll do that. But I, I think either way, we can, we'll, we'll find a spot to bring these people to the south end of the building, that southeast, that southeast corner.
That change.
Thank you.
I was just wondering, you do have it on the north side, and if you moved it to the south side, would you move the parking closer to the sidewalk? And would move that space that you have there, on that side?
So would, would be the, the parking closer to the building, or would be the parking closer to?
Sidewalk, so you have enough room on your south side to put the garbage?
We would, yes, we would, we would have to.
Just as a, that's the, the front setback for accessory parking, it's 25. It looks like to, um, yeah, your, your snow removal area.
Yes.
It looks like we have a lot of snow, which kind of, you're going to have some issues with accessibility and, and the parking lot, where you, you know, what's your contingency plan as far as we get a couple feet of snow, as, you know, we haven't recently, we've been lucky, but I mean, you know, go back to two years, you know, remember getting two feet, two feet, two feet within two weeks, you know? What do we do then? I mean, what are we going to do with all this stuff?
I, I think, well
Well, actually, if I could chime in real quick on this, just because Russ isn't here, I know this is something that he talked about, but Russ, the city engineer, recommends, you know, a, a pervious, a pervious surface, like a six foot wide buffers zone on the north end of the paved surface. Primarily, that, that's where a lot of the snow storage would, would go, in theory, so as much of it could go back into the ground as possible. But, I mean, we are, we are limited with, with the surface lot here, because it's preexisting, and there's a lot of asphalt, so kind of one of those do the best you can situations. Like for a food takeout.
The way, the way he has described it today, it's a fall style food. So he's going to have his, 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 basically counter services. It's going to be, you know, variety of proteins, your lamb, your chicken, your fish, rice. Plus his steam table. He will have, I, he, he will have, he said one fryer, but they can give you two deep fryers, because he will have french fries, and, you know, chicken tenders and so forth. And there will be, you know, flat top, riddle. Burgers and cheese cakes and so forth in there, so, but, yeah, it'd just be
everything.
I'm not aware of a lease in place, and I think also that's because of this whole process.
Right now, we're in order to lease it.
Yeah, I, I, I met him for the first time in February, I had a conversation with him two weeks ago, two, three weeks ago. I said, are you still with us? And he said, yes. So because I wanted to make sure, and I wanted to make sure that I could answer that question.
Could potentially change, from what we're saying here, is day spa and food takeout?
Yes.
So, I'll, I'll, I'll address that.
Okay.
The use is still be considered broadly as commercial.
Broadly as
So, yeah, so whatever its specific uses, right, whether it's a, a spa or a burger stand, provided that they're allowable uses in that zone, then the consideration of the term use would probably, you know, in terms of unapproved use being commercial, so it doesn't go for changes of use anymore, in the, in the literal sense. It would just be commercial, because it was originally zoned as residence. That's how it got rezoned as well. So that's why, when they went before the ZBA, the ZBA said, okay, we will approve your use variance on site plan review. To improve the conditions that you guys are reviewing.
Thank you, Eric. Or any other questions for the board?
Yeah, I had one, one other question. I know you talked about sidewalks. It, it says here that there was a, a new sidewalk had been installed and drive entry without the, of the last planning board's approval. I know you mentioned
I can explain.
Yeah.
So the original C sidewalk, concrete sidewalk, over a number of years, and I think I'm going back 11 or 12 years. That, that had transformed from a small little parking area to what we see now, the full hundred foot width of the building right up to the front of, of the property, right up to the front of the building. In doing so, they had paved over the top of the old concrete sidewalk. So in part of our proposal, it was, we were going to review, we were going to scrape the top of the concrete. So as you can see, that's, you could see sections of the underlying original sidewalk. So we were going to scrape the blacktop, and it was going to allow me to come before the original, the planning commission and discuss what we were proposing to do to repair the sidewalk. I asked the owner if he had a contractor that could scrape the blacktop. Week or so later, I got a call that the, there was a stop work order, because they had actually torn all of the concrete up. So I worked with the owner's contractor to come down to the city, file for a permit, for a barricade permit, to block the area off and rebuild the sidewalks. So I was actually at the site today. Sidewalks look good. Went a little overboard, because we, the most recent set of plans, we've now, at the, at the request of the city engineer, we take up about 50 feet in, not quite the middle of the, of the lot, but we start the curves to get onto the property. So at the mouth of the opening to get onto the property, it's 38 feet. He's only got about a 25 foot drive entrance, so there will be corrective measures that will have to be made upon approval to move forward with it. But yes, that, that was, that's, that's how that, that transpired.
Anyone else, questions? Okay, thank you, sir. Is that, is there anyone else here to speak on this application?
Oh, she'd love this to get approved.
All right, well, thank you.
Thank you.
So no, seeker's already been resolved, is that correct?
It is a type two action, so seeker is not required.
No seeker required. Okay, so then, the posture is that it's ready for approval or denial or conditional approval, is that correct?
Correct.
And so, there, there being a lot of open issues, but applicants represented indicating that they're going to try to resolve those with the city. And I understand that our options would probably then be to either give a conditional approval or table it until the next meeting, for those issues to be resolved, so is there, the condition would be, the condition upon city's engineering and planning staff agreeing with the applicant on these staff recommendations, or some resolution of the staff recommendations. Is that correct, Eric?
Yes.
So what would your pleasure be? Is there a motion one way or the other? Conditional approval, or?
I'll move for a conditional approval.
Thank you, Jim, and second, Jim?
I second that.
Thank you. Discussion on the motion.
Just to ensure, we want to make sure that we put those conditions on the record before we
Yes.
issue a vote.
Okay, and so the conditions, I guess, are, all, that, the condition would be that all of the staff recommendations be resolved to the satisfaction of the city staff, engineer and, and planning staff, is that correct?
Yes.
I know there are some that are not issues at all, but the ones that were identified tonight, a lighting issue, the trees, which I think have, have been resolved, the curbing issue, and the location of the trash.
I would, I would also make mention of the pervious surface area recommended by city engineer.
Okay, okay. So, so do you, that's your pleasure, include those as specific conditions, as listed by the planning staff?
Yeah. Yes. Yes.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, then I guess I will call the roll. Do it alphabetically. Member Dickinson?
Yes.
Member Shufel?
Yes.
Member Scully?
Yes.
Member York?
Yes.
Member Kio, yes. So unanimous, conditional approval. Congratulations. Work it out with the city staff, all right?
Very much.
Sounds good, Andy. Take care.
I don't know if I stated for the record, but after having called the roll, we do have a quorum present. I think it's evident. Thank you. So the next item on the agenda is 20240024, and that is off the agenda at the request again of the applicant. The tap.
That's correct. Peter, I'm getting a message on Zoom, if you would be able to speak somewhat closer to your microphone. Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Yes, item, BLPC 20240024 has requested a tabling. They may be, they may be coming back December.
Okay.
Staff will keep you notified.
The next item on the agenda, 20230039 is also off the agenda, is that at the request of the applicant, I know it's some court decisions have
At the request of the applicant.
Thank you, thank you, Dana. Next application is under new business, 20240050. Seven to 13 Park Avenue. Subdivision and lot line adjustment review. Unlisted seeker action.
Okay, you got me?
Yeah.
Big difference. Okay. Fred Dargus with Habitat Humanity, Director of Construction and Real Estate. So we are proposing four single family homes on Park Avenue. We purchased nine, 11, and seven, nine, and 11 from the Troy County Land Bank, and we own 13 Park Avenue, which is currently a a single family home that we would like to demolish and replace with, with a single family home. I believe seven and nine was originally two individual lots, but at some point it was combined into one lot when it was city owned, so now we're proposing to bring it back to two individual lots. So the purpose of, of me being here today is for a subdivision followed, which would involve a couple of lot line adjustments in order to fit in with the, with the proposed homes that were, we'd like to construct there.
Okay, thank you. Did you have an, did you have an opportunity to review the staff recommendations?
Yes, I did, and I forward everything over to our surveyor, and they will adjust the survey accordingly.
You know, the answer to the question about whether or not proposed lot nine would have a separate water line?
Oh, yes, everything would, would be tapped directly from the water, the
Main.
Water main and the sewer main that's currently in this, in this street.
Okay. Okay. Any, do you have any objections or difficulties with any of the staff recommendations?
No.
So, any questions, board members? Are these, these would be sold, right?
Yeah, these, these would be sold to first time home buyers, correct?
Corporation Council would be in order for us to make lead agency determination declaration today?
Uh, yes.
Yes, and then, and then, I understand it'd be in negative, it appears to be a negative declaration, because it's unlisted action.
So, so yes, it's an unlisted action. They have supplied a short form, city has provided the parts two and three to that form, it should be in front of you. We believe that the record is sufficient enough for you to make a determination on seeker.
Make a determination without the form?
By going through the form.
The, the, the items that, you know, the, the applicant, the city have weighed in on, we believe is sufficient enough for a determination to be made.
So is this form filed?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, all right. So I guess then the first order of business would be to make a determination of the agency status, is there a motion to, for the planning board to accept the agency status on this application?
I'll move to name the planning board as a lead agency.
Thank you.
I second.
Mr. Shufel, thank you. Discussion on the motion? Member Scully?
It looks like the, the short form environmental assessment form looks complete to me.
So on the, we're voting on the lead agency status first?
So I'd like to vote in affirmative, yes.
Okay, thank you. Member Shufel?
Yes.
I, I, I should get, member Dickinson, member Dickinson?
Yes.
Sorry. Member York?
Yes.
Member Kio, yes. Unanimous. Now on the second question of sta, seeker declaration. Neg, negative declaration?
I'd vote yes for neg dec.
Based upon the short, the AF form?
Is that a motion, Mr. Scully?
Well, I'd move to accept the short form of, of short environment assessment.
So issue a negative
And issue a negve, declaration.
We'll get this one done eventually. It's been a long time since I've dealt with this myself, too, so thank you. Motion made, is there a second?
I second it.
Member Dickinson, thank you. Discussion on the motion. I'll call the role, member Dickinson.
Yes.
Member Scully.
Yes.
Member Shufel.
Yes.
Member York.
Yes.
Member Kio, yes. Approved. Unanimously. Now, the next issue is uh what to do with this application and is uh, I think it's before us for a recommendation to the.
The 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 next order would be a um determination of the application's completeness. A determination of the application's completeness.
Right. And so do we have a motion that? The application is complete or is it for the discussion on that issue?
I'll move to acknowledge the application's complete.
Member Scully, uh, is there a second?
I'll second.
Member Dickinson, thank you. Any discussion on the motion? I'll call the role. Member Dickinson.
Yes.
Member Scully.
Yes.
Member Shufel.
Yes.
Member York.
Yes.
Member Kio, yes. Unanimous. Determination that the application is complete, next order of business would be.
The applicant requires variances uh on this particular item, so um. You could either uh, a referral is in order. And to that nature. You would probably want to provide something down the road, or at least discuss now here whether or not you believe uh to issue a recommendation to approve or deny the variance request.
So the two separate steps will will refer refer it to the ZBA. And and. In doing that, we'll determine whether or not we send it with a recommendation or without recommendations.
Correct.
Or recommendation not to approve.
Correct.
Yes, okay, so um. I guess the best way to bring it to the table is to have a motion to refer it to the. ZBA, and then we can discuss the format of that if we have such a motion. Is there a motion to refer the matter to the ZBA?
Yes, I'll make a motion to refer to the ZBA.
Member Dixon, thank you, is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Member Scully, thank you. So a discussion on the motion, and we I think we can include in the discussion. Whether or not to refer it and also whether to refer it with or without. The recommendation. So your pleasure, folks. Anybody have any points on that? All right, then I think we'll put it this way, we'll entertain a motion to refer the. Application to the zoning board of appeals. With recommendation to approve, is there anyone who will show move?
I'll move to send it to the ZBA with a recommendation to approve.
Second?
I'll second.
Member Dickinson, thank you. Any uh discussion on that motion? Call the role. Member Dickinson.
Yes.
Member Scully.
Yes.
Member Shufel.
Yes.
Member York.
Yes.
Member Kio, yes. Approved unanimously. Business with respect to this application?
You, if you'd like, you could ask the applicant when they would like to return to set that hearing.
Okay, yes.
Do you know if you'll be able to get on the zoning board's next agenda?
If the requirement is just to fulfill the staff notes and have everything uh placed onto the survey, yes, we can do it. I'll have that body in the week.
Well, uh, those those would probably, th- those would be separate action for the consideration of the um, the subdivision review. In terms of uh your placement on the ZBA's agenda. I think you've submitted your items to Angelina.
Yeah.
Already. Do you know whether or not she's gotten you uh on the November? Agenda, I think it's the sixth.
I haven't gotten any uh response from that.
Okay.
No, he he they are not on the agenda. They were supposed to come to planning first.
I'm gonna check with Angelina, uh, because I believe the applicant did submit their materials for the request of the variance area variance request. If they're in line for the November um meeting, then. Provided your surveyor, I I mean, I don't know how fast your surveyor is able to get us the information that is required.
Yes, spoke to them this morning, they'll have it for me before the end of the week.
Okay.
Hi, Eric.
That's the case, um, it's likely going to hit the December agenda. For zoning. And we can't, we can't uh. Come to any kind of approval until the variance request is uh reviewed and voted on. So I would say um. You know, maybe the applicant would prefer to to set up the December hearing date. And get back to us if they think they can get on for November.
Yeah.
Intensively, we'll put it on the December meeting for hearing. Public hearing.
Yeah, uh, yeah.
And if we have to adjourn it, we'll adjourn it.
Well, yeah, the question is whether or not they're able to get on the November agenda for ZBA, which I it it appears that they're. They're not on the agenda so far.
They're not currently on the agenda, I'm not sure if they can be added.
So the worst case scenario, like I wouldn't want to, I wouldn't want to push this out further than December, so. If the applicant agrees to December hearings, then.
Ideally, we would love to be on the November, uh, just because we need to demo the home, and it's kind of difficult to do it in the winter. And this pushes the project out, so we're trying to get some families into the house uh by late spring. So all of this sort of triggers our our schedule uh for twenty twenty five. I'll see whatever, you know, I'll talk to Angie tomorrow to see what else we need to provide in order to be on that list. I think we were waiting for this meeting to determine what happens next. In my honesty, i- in my opinion, I I was under the impression that this was a a single meeting process. Being that we're simply subdividing, but in order to subdivide, you have to have the lot line adjusted. Which triggers the the need for the variance, so I didn't realize it was multiple meetings for uh for that request.
Yeah, um, under the new zoning code, all all uh planning board review is a two two step process at minimum. The first meeting will always be for a declaration of the application's completeness, designation of lead agency, if that's the case, and um. The scheduling of a hearing. Unfortunately, the approval process and the schedule of the scheduling of a hearing can't take place in one night. It's um.
If you can get on the November sixth meeting for ZPA, could he then be on our November meeting?
Yes.
On the nineteen?
I was under the impression that you were, so I apologize. I'll speak with Angelina. It might be past it, but I don't, I don't run the deadlines for that board, so it might be past that point.
Point.
Now, the concern is the initial concern upfront is the demolition.
Yes.
This item is also involves the demolition of an existing house. I don't know. I I don't know. If you guys would make a motion to allow the applicant to resume, I don't know if that's even legal. But they have a a structure on the site that is uh, it's not an imminent threat. So uh, if it were, it'd be a little actually.
It's not.
It's not an imminent threat, and it's not. It it's not an imminent threat of collapse.
I would think if if that lot, you're not changing that lot, right? The lot that has the house.
In terms of the width eventually, uh.
Is the line going to change?
Oh.
On that lot where the house?
So the the it's the furthest structure to the right, there's an existing house there.
My question is if that lot's not going to change or isn't subject to.
The.
Approval that if there's a process for applying for a demolition permit.
How about now?
Such a thing, that might be able to move forward in parallel with. This application.
Yeah, there will be a slight adjustment in the lot line for that lot. Correct, for third.
Making it bigger or smaller?
Slightly smaller.
It's a little tricky because there are some implications once you demolish that building with respect to. If you don't get approved. For the variance on limiting what you can reconstruct. I think it merits further discussion with.
Okay.
Plannings and codes. And the city engineer. On what your timing options might be with respect to that demolition.
Gotcha. Okay, so I'll see.
I'm sorry, a couple of questions for Eric. So is the timing of the November? ZBA meeting and the planning? Board meeting. Such that. There's time for the ZBA to act and then for us to act both in November? Are are they separated by a week or what is?
Pretty close, uh. It's roughly twelve, ten or twelve days or so.
Oh, okay, so that so that may work for you if you can get the ZBA to take it. And the other question is on the demolition. If the demo, can we approve the demolition on? At the next meeting and at the same time. Take up this application?
I don't know if approving the demolition is a planning board function. It may be something code and engineering works with the applicant.
I think we used to have, but I don't know what.
Basically said that uh demolitions need to go through planning.
As well.
Yeah.
They need both.
Those that are an imminent threat, you know, have have kind of a pathway to come down absent those approvals.
So my question then is if if we do have to give approval, will we be able to approve the demolition on the same night that we approved the application?
Theoretically, it would all be wrapped up and tied up into one bundle, yeah.
Okay.
Um, I mean, I you you might, you might say, you know, due to the circumstances, you might make a motion to approve the demolition tonight. I don't know if that would stand, if that's sufficient enough for the building department. To be honest with you, I'd have to double check, you know, whether or not something like that's been done before.
Well, we can approve it subject to. Approval by the planning department or the engineer.
It would it would be, it would be the the building department and the city engineer. And I believe that there's a process that plays out for uh demolitions, but um.
Well, I know it used to be uh back in the dark ages that the those applications had to be subject to a public hearing. Because people would come in and object that the building was, you know, should be saved and all that kind of stuff. Is that still true?
Which is, yeah, why we schedule the hearing would would encompass all of that.
So is there any action that we can take tonight to help expedite this if it's finally going to be approved and?
I'd probably defer to you.
I would, I would be hesitant to take action tonight.
All right.
I know that's disappointing for the applicant, but I think we need more information before. Moving forward with any approvals, including demolition.
Well, it's, I kind of, you're saying that if he, if the building gets demolished. And he doesn't get approved. And where do you go from there? Know what I mean?
In 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 theory, we could still at least review, if nothing else, we could just review it as a demolition, right? So even if they weren't coming before us for uh a lot line adjustment or subdivision, you know, they would still be up here needing to get approval and take the building down. So at the end of the day, if nothing else, even if they don't approve the area variance, then you guys would still have purview over being able to decide if you wanted to. Approve that demolition.
All right, okay. So have we uh?
So you'll want to, you'll want to set a hearing and and make a motion to confirm it.
Right, set the hearing for November, tentatively. Pending ZBA.
Yeah, we could set the hearing for November and um with uh. The caveat that if that changes, then you can contact city staff and and set up uh your next appearance for December.
Gotcha.
I think either way, you can come back in November, because even if you don't have ZBA approval. You could still seek the demolition permit in November.
Right, and we would also need an updated survey just for you to get back on in November.
Gotcha.
Full, full package.
Okay. Okay, so um, the action would be a resolution. Setting. The next appearance for hearing uh at the November meeting of the board.
Believe November nineteenth.
Is there a motion?
I make a motion that we review it again on November nineteenth.
Thank you, uh, member Dixon, second?
I second.
Member Shufel, thank you, uh, discussion on the motion. Member Dickinson?
Yeah, no discussion.
Yes, on a vote.
Member Scully?
Yes.
Member Shufel?
Yes.
Member York?
Yes.
Member Kio, yes. Unanimously approved, thank you.
Okay.
Good luck, we hope to see you in November.
Alrighty, sounds good, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other business to come before the board? Court counsel, anything for us?
Nothing from me.
Mr. Mr. Ferraro? A motion to adjourn?
I'll move to adjourn.
Member Scully, uh, second?
I'll second.
Member Dickinson, discussion, call in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nay, motion carries. Tonight.